The main thing, the rules of order, but there again, it's a little bit more lenient as far as being able to speak out and get more done this way than we can in a formal meeting. Do you have any other questions about the procedure of reference to this meeting?
Give me how it works? What do you mean you need my question? You've got a long agenda here. Give me how it operates. You saying my question? Yeah, no, I think we understand.
Okay.
So maybe Shelby, which I had, who ran.
All right, called the order. First thing on the agenda, on the work session agenda, was employees' help and dental insurance. Now, I think there was a misunderstanding, or it wasn't explained correctly by me at the regular meeting. We're not trying to approve anything other than the fact that the insurance that we provide for our employer was with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they quit representing this type insurance in this area, and it was going to have to go to Casa Permanente, which would put it off the services probably out of the Atlanta or another area. So, found out that GMA fortunately provides insurance to their cities, and does it in such a way that they can provide it for actually a little less cost than we were paying with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, what the motion that we were asking is that, that we be allowed to go under the GMA plan, and that's all we were getting at. As far as the amount, that's part of the salary that was promised and given over the last many years to the city clerk, and at one time, the city administrator. So, all the, we're asking is that the, we'd be allowed to sign over to GMA group plan, rather than going with Casa Permanente. As I said, if any questions, just come on out with them, and we handle it on a casual basis.
I had a question on the, the cost of the plan.
Uh huh. Oh, I sent that to you earlier, but the new one is six fifty-five, the old one was six seventy-one, or difference savings of twenty-one dollars.
Is that a month? Yeah.
Yes.
Sound a bit like it.
Everybody good with it now?
It sounds like a no-brainer.
Um, I have a question. Um, you said it was a promise, and I remember I asked you did the contract expire during the last meeting? I was talking about the contract, but insurance did expire, and you said it was verbal. A verbal, you said it was a verbal contract. So, you now you're saying it was a promise, so are we...
What's a verbal contract?
When I asked you during the last meeting about our insurance, was the contract expired? And you said it was verbal.
I don't think you understood what contract, what kind of contract you're talking about.
No, obviously I did not.
So, which verbal contract you was talking about then?
Y'all talking now.
Yes. Which verbal contract?
I don't remember the conversation.
Cause we was, at first was talking about, um, Bushel had expired, and I asked you what about, then I asked you about the contract when it expired, but we was talking about her ins, uh, her contract, not theirs, cause y'all already said Bushel had already expired, so.
Right. I don't have a contract, or employment contract, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, no, I don't have one, an employee contract.
So, when you said it's a promise, that means a verbal promise that we provide the insurance for?
No, it was agreed upon in a meeting.
Agreed upon inviting.
It's in the budget.
It was in the budget. I know it's in the budget, but...
Budget line item.
So, you didn't have a contract for it?
Well, it was in the meetings, every meeting. They made a motion, and it seconded, and everybody approved to give me insurance.
Which one was that? How long ago?
April third, two thousand and six. There you go. It's highlighted right there. That was back, back in April?
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, twelve years ago, almost.
Oh, two thousand and six? Oh, I was thinking, I didn't remember that. I'd like to see a copy of that. I didn't even know it existed. Probably got it somewhere, but I don't know where. Now, what is that? Tell me what it is. I don't even understand this. What is this?
She's reading the minutes.
Well, what is it?
A meeting where the insurance came up, and was approved that insurance be given to the employees. At that time, there were two.
And it, and it fell into? It didn't, we didn't give it to the administrator. She didn't want it.
She didn't want it?
She didn't have to.
Okay.
But that goes on, and it, that's to infinity?
Until, until something else comes up, it was, it was...
I just was not aware of that.
It was agreed that it, uh, that it be part of the financial arrangement. It is part of the salary in essence.
Okay, I just didn't know that.
So, it's part of the sal-
But it's, it's, it's in addition to the salary?
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it'd be, yeah, it would be a part of or an addition to. Which way you want to look at it?
Cause addition would be means it'd be more. I mean, part of, I mean, subtract that amount, so I'm just, sometimes you have to talk to me like I don't know. Doesn't work, I can't, you know, get it better.
Since that was done, it's been in the budget ever since. So, it's not like I add on, I can't even, I'm here for, just the same thing.
It was add-on, but also recently, we just increased our salary, right? So...
No.
So, was that a loss?
No.
Per missed it?
No, I was, I was, I was last, you know, I'm, I, I'm the type, I like to make sure I understand and everything.
No, they hadn't done an increase. Yeah, I didn't get my part.
And I'm told I see something else on here, but you didn't highlight it. The town administrator's low hours?
That's administrator. That's administrator.
Yeah, and aren't you a, a town administrator now?
No.
Still city clerk.
Still city clerk, so that didn't, that didn't go through?
We didn't, we didn't go through with it.
Cause I knew I was in that one.
Wow. Did, um, was there, was, was the GMA insurance the only option?
Only one we could find, and, uh, only because of the size and the spread by GMA were we able to get that kind of rate, I'm sure, because there, you know, so many cities involved. And I didn't know they provided. Did you know before they made these calls?
I knew it years ago. I hadn't really thought about it, cause we didn't, they argued, Blue Cross always did individual policies, and it's just this year when they, you know, stopped it.
They're, I think they're all in large.
Right. So, anyway, I mean, I had to find somewhere, or somehow, some, some entity that I could become a member. We talked about maybe contacting Cali County, and maybe I could somehow or another, you know, get on their policy with them, or Sonora, and they're, that's just not something they can allow without putting me on their payroll. Uh, so GMA was the only thing we did come up with.
Okay. I could've sworn I saw her salary, uh, for the year two thousand and seventeen was lower than forty-one, forty-one thousand, and we've gotten a budget for two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, but that's probably both of ours put together. Both of what? Both ours, South, oh, okay.
Is your salary and insurance put together?
No, that insurance is separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's one, that's another thing. I mean, if you didn't get an increase in her salary for the town administrator, I would have passed that. She got an increase in her salary, right? Is that correct last year? So, you got, uh, you got the old question on?
She's not wearing it.
There hasn't been an increase.
Yeah, I don't know. Somebody else saw something different. Maybe I just looked at it wrong. So, she was back in nineteen, two thousand and six?
Two thousand and sixteen.
Six, okay.
Y'all good?
I'm not quite ready yet. I think. I'm just gonna pop it up.
I don't, I don't confuse y'all in that, but I'm not yet. Don't mind.
How'd you get through so fast? You done?
I had to stop. Didn't plan that. Oh, for the count. I done that, it's pretty.
Didn't you stop?
Still got two or three hours worth of time before we get done. She never needed, uh...
I see what I saw. I saw something else. It was, uh, it was for the amount of November, it was a thirty-some thousand.
Right, there you go. Her, okay.
We're good. Okay. Anything else y'all want to discuss reference to the employment help? Are we ready to go to the ice machine?
I gotta go back. I'm somewhere in the, in the charter, and this is because of that two thousand and six thing. It says that you can't, you can't obligate one council to, uh, you can't pass on a thing, but there must be a way around that, cause they just do it. But there is a place that says you can't oblig- how do you do that?
Let me see if I can give you an example of what type obligations they're referring to. Like, for instance, the loan that we took out on the property, it's done in one-year increments. That would be a decent example. You can't obligate that next council. It has to be done in one-year increments and renewed.
Then why wouldn't we have to do this that way? And I'm not meaning to do it necessarily, but what's the difference? And I never would've thought of it if that two thousand and six thing hadn't come up.
Hadn't thought about it.
Maybe.
But it got to be a way around it, cause it's done in several, several aspects where it refers to personnel.
That's why we need a lawyer.
Well, now that's...
Cause it brings us right through that.
Now, that's a question that we can put before the attorney, bring it forward group.
Yeah. Can we have him here? Can we have him here, can we have him attend meetings?
It's expensive.
Do you think it would save the long run? I mean...
We just had him here at all the meetings a long time ago, and it got to the point that when he moved to Atlanta, that particular attorney, uh, we were charged for the time he left, for the time he got back, but usually didn't charge us for all that. But attorneys at meetings can get expensive. They're gonna charge you-
Right.
For hours. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we don't have any use for it. We don't need them. Think of anything recently that we have, that just hadn't, hadn't had a use for it. But, um, that's it, y'all. If y'all wanna pay it, but it's expensive.
Do we know how much it is, or?
Two hundred dollars an hour.
How much that makes hundred dollars an hour?
And that's cheap, because we weren't paying, uh, the, some towns, if they pay them, uh, three fifty an hour. And that's from the time they leave the office to the time they get back to the office.
Just a question. I'll wait, did this, it occurred to me after those dates came up.
We'll get an answer to your question. Anything else?
Can I ask one question?
Uh huh.
Right now, I have never been asked about it, but by, since you wanna go in the right order for the agenda, if I wanna come back and ask the question, okay.
Yeah, and, and work session, that's, that's the reason it's so much less involved, you know? This other guy come in and look at putting the ice machine in town. This is what, if you look at the picture, the third page down, that will show you what they normally look like. He wanted to come into Sharpsburg and do it right, do it like...
That big thing?
You know what the call was used at Town Sharpsburg, something like that.
Yes, okay, all right.
And, um, on to the second page, you'll see a map, which is to the north, or to the right facing the frigid frog. It would be between the frigid frog and the, uh, station there.
Whose property is that? Whose property is that?
Owns to Mayhew.
So, he's gonna do it for many...
He owns that old block, doesn't he?
Owns the old block. And, uh, he's arguing, "Okay, Mr. Mayhew, and, uh, it'll be, uh, put on a stacked permanent type foundation, and lift it over and put on the foundation so it doesn't have its own running here like a trailer." So, he's looking at doing it very similar to the way this building is done, with brick at the bottom, and the same type siding here with a mantried pipe over the top. Now, this is flat behind that sort of mantried, but he's done that so it will halfway hide the fridge, refrigeration unit which sits over here. You can see it in the picture.
Yep.
And then, the back portion, he's going to have to look like chimneys out the top. So, he's trying to make it conform to the look that we have here in Sharpsburg.
Make it not look like an ice trailer.
Exactly. And we can't find any reason to deny it. No ordinance, no rules, no regulation. No zoning, where it is, can we deny it?
They have to have a business license.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
So, we're not requiring it to look good. He's just volunteering it to look good.
He's just volunteering it to look good. So, what do you want? And we said, we showed him that, and he looked at it, and he went outside of the building, and he come running back in. He said, "Could I put the brick at the bottom and use the same siding?" Yeah, that's what we're talking about. So, he wants to do it right.
Will there be anything to require him to do it right, because that little frigid frog thing is, he might get the idea, since they doing that, he would do the same thing?
Well, we could, we could write him up an agreement that make him sign it.
Cause that's not gonna affect his hair.
Saying that he's going to make it look like that, and make him sign it. Uh, and they're going to eliminate one of the electrical pedestals by running both to the same pole. Any questions about the ice machine?
Where will the pole be?
It'll be between here and the frigid frog.
Right there, so it won't be behind the building, or it be hidden?
It's gonna have, it'll have to be somewhere that it can cover whole buildings, and it might link to where it is, if they can. To do that, they would have to run it to the pole that exists at frigid frog, and put an auxiliary blank pole for support to come in the back of this building.
He's gonna have to tap on the turing water, too.
Mm-hmm. He's gonna have to tap on the turing water. Now, he's gonna have, uh, three-phase electricity also to run that heavy compressor. So, he'll have to have...
The ones I've seen, ice, this ice machine, they do, they'll give it a bigger space than some, though.
He says they do, but, um, he's got them all over. He's got them in, uh, several local towns, all these buildings.
So, what do you, can you pick up this bag here, or you use your own bag?
No, you got bag right there. Or you put it under, and you pick which side bag you'll get, and the ice just comes down into it.
That's a lot of ice, it's free.
And look at, look at the price.
It's like twenty pounds.
No, with two dollars. Oh, my God.
Yeah.
There's one, uh, uh, the...
Bag ice tip, that bag, like three or four dollars.
By now. Yeah. There's one up at the car wash, at Thomas Crossroads, I think.
There's still ice at the Dollar General.
Yeah, it gonna mess them up, yeah.
Yeah.
How much is this bag weight?
Uh, small, a dollar and eighty-something, so it would, it would mess them up.
That's, that's a better price than Good Men's do.
Yeah, I always suggest to the customer, go turing to get the ice.
I do, do they have one of these?
Interiors, yeah.
That's what they do, that's what they do.
And also, uh, dispense that with water, too. Would this one give out water, or just ice?
Uh, he didn't say anything about water.
I know it used to do water.
That'd be good.
Yeah. Uh, this guy's with the, one of the baseball teams, and he goes off to spring practice on the eleventh of this month, and, and he's gone for a while, but so this is not anything he's gonna do within the next few, few days.
I think if we could have it not look like that.
Just look like that.
That was, that was my objection to having it look like that.
Looks terrible.
Yeah, the little villains are trying.
Yeah, thank you.
He, he was sick when, when we brought that up to him to do it like that. He liked that idea.
There was talk of getting frigid frog to do something that would look a little bit better last year.
Yeah, maybe. I, no, he's in, um, he's in management. He's in Boston, but he told me what's going on.
He used to manage the Atlanta Bridge.
Just rent that one.
He used to manage the Atlanta Bridge.
Yeah, he done know, that man did all the, whole, whole...
Frank Frank went and re...
Well, he's the one that has one at Thomas Crossroads.
Yeah, he got like fourteen of them, they said, and they...
Yeah.
Nice guy. He got plenty of money.
Super nice guy.
He's got plenty of money.
Oh, yes, I know, I know. Yeah, my, my, anyone here?
We ready to go to the parking light? Are we through with the ice? Anybody have any more comments on the, on the ice machine?
Will there be two hearings about that, like everything else? Where? The foot line. Don't you have hearings when you do that? You had to do it when you did the frigid frog. What's the difference?
That's cause we were on it.
This is business, so he's just gonna pop a business license.
Oh, okay.
We don't have to have an order change. Parking lot lights. Here's the question we have. We got the light. To answer Shelby's question, uh, we've got a light at the far end of the pavilion that's aimed toward the park, the playground. Uh, the other parking lot lights are, as you know, are aimed toward the parking lot. Um, we wanna know, do you want them on every night? Do you want them coming on sometimes at dusk and going off at eleven o'clock? What is the wishes of council as to when they're on, and, um, we'll take care of the timing. We got timers, and we got sensors, so we can set the timer to come on and off whenever we want, but do we want the parking light lights on every night? How many nights a week is the Dutch people here?
Well, choose your wish to Thursday.
Cause they're here part of the time, and they can use them. And then Saturday night, once in a while, and then we have rentals on Saturday night sometime.
Most weekend.
What's the latest people have the place rented?
Twelve. Midnight?
I think if, being the case, I think they should be on sensors.
Yeah.
Once they come on, they would all make it go off at one o'clock, twenty-eight. You think y'all stay on the one?
Stay on the one, dealing with a sensor, when somebody come around, sensor, Tom come back on that. Cause I heard the residents complain, one of the residents complained about it.
He don't want all the time, but I'm just saying, if they get here till midnight...
Isn't a sensor just a motion sensor?
What kind of sensor you talking about? What kind you got? Now, these, that's what I'm saying. These are what you hit it, and you got the lights that come on.
Right.
The, the, uh, ones I'm talking about are the light sensitive sensors on top, that come on, if you wanted it to come on every night, they'll come on and go off at...
So, it's a motion sensor?
No, not a motion sensor.
But these are light sensors that, like the streetlights out here are. When it gets dark, they come on. When it gets daylight, they go off. That's just every night.
Could we get motion sensors in? Because one of the residents complaining about some kids coming, and they be out there, you can't see them, so...
I was thinking that same thing, that, um, totally black out there is probably not a good thing. So, I think some light needs to be out there overnight, if it's nothing more than one, one light, just to have, so you can see if somebody's there or not. Is that possible?
All right, we got the light sensor on top. We got the timer that we can come on and go off whenever we want. It would, it would be difficult to put one light on a motion sensor.
And just a little bit of light, not total black. You know how they used to hang out around the little library, when it got dark over there, and caused all kind of, I 'm afraid with black, dark there, it'll be conducive to hang out, people hanging out.
I would require, but more than...
That's where they usually hang.
To do that, more than lights, we're gonna have to put up another light.
Oh, God.
What about, who we got the electricity with? R E A or Georgia Power?
Georgia Power.
See, if they can't put one big light that comes on at night, you know, like the streetlights, it's that one at the middle.
Oh, yeah.
And then, the other lights, remember have a switch in here, when people use it, they can turn it on. When they leave, they turn it off.
The one big one kinda give you some light.
Just like a visual streetlight, maybe. The one at the street may be enough, I just have them come down here to work.
If you put it in the middle of the parking lot, that one light should be good.
Yeah. Cause make that lady, I don't know her name, she, she was very concerned about it, cause a lot of teenagers come out here and sit on, on the playgrounds.
Can we just like do, uh, have the, the parking lot lights on until like midnight?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, every night.
And then have an overhead light for all night, one, that would stay on all night.
Yeah.
But then have the parking lot lights go off at midnight, or one, or whatever time.
Because if they're being used four nights, the building four nights a week, and then sometimes on Saturday, it seems if we let them come on at, uh, come on at dusk, dark, go off at midnight, that would suffice. And then have the one that you're talking about, that stays on all night long.
I like that.
Did you also say you wanna put cameras out there?
Got them like that.
So, if, I'm just saying, if there's cameras out there in the dark, it ain't gonna...
They're just like these. See, that one, that one?
I'm pretty sure I'm not close. Aren't they, aren't they night vision cameras, too?
Yes, they are. So, we got four lights, uh, four cameras outside and four in here. If you look, you can see them in here. Uh, they'll be hooked up to the computer here very shortly. All the wiring is already run down to the, to the exit. All right, we're good on the lights then to, uh, have them fixed.
Can I, can I read back what I have, so we can make sure that everybody knows what that?
Go ahead.
Uh, one light, just stay on all night, and it's like a, you know, the security lights. Um, and then have our parking lot lights come on. That does not include the park, I mean, the grass and stuff out here. That's just the parking line. Uh, come on at, at dark, and then go off at about midnight. And that shouldn't really affect anybody, because those trees are gonna block pretty much the houses, I think.
Yes.
Hopefully.
And we got to, we got the lights aimed so that they're, they're focused down straight onto the parking lot, not just up in the air. Um, now, we've got the one light right here at the end of the building, at the end of the breezeway on the outside, but you'd rather have one, an addition further on over, is what I'm hearing, in the parking lot itself.
And put it up light on.
Yeah, just back what you read.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, got that covered. I will look into that immediately. Cash management policy is the next thing on the agenda?
I suggested that one, because I think that amount that can be done without coming before the council needs to be reviewed. I thought so with verbally admitted before I was on the council. I'm on the council, and I will say it again. I just think that's a lot of money for that coming before the council. And I also wonder about, what we've done in the past has not been, uh, don't do the same thing all the time. We get bids sometimes, and sometimes we don't. And sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't. I think we need to get bids on a certain amount, and get... And sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. I think we need to get bids on a certain amount and get bids over a certain amount, period. Uh, we've gotten them from some kind of minor things. Last year, I remember we got the defibrillator, remember? And that was only two or three thousand dollars, but went to all the trouble to get bids on that and brought it before the council. And to be in my bond, it is eighty-five hundred dollars for lights, it didn't come before the council. And so that was the reason I put it back, to, to have that amount, for us to decide on an amount less and have it come before the council every time.
Right, here's what, here's what, uh, town hall is faced with. This is what the city manager would be faced with, in this case, the mayor and clerk. In this, like this one example, we had no idea how much.
Daniel, this is surprising.
Uh, we know the five thousand dollars. Did we think it could be done for less than that? Yes, I did. Now, when they had to get out there and dig holes four foot deep to find the wiring, to find the problem, and trace that thing all the way down, sure, I could've stopped them at any point and say, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're going over the five thousand dollars. But the lights needed to be fixed. I had heard from you quite a bit, reference to the lights, and I knew that everybody wanted them fixed, and I knew it was gonna be expensive to fix them. We prolonged it long as we could and tried to use the cheapest person we could to get it done. He couldn't do it. So that's why I came before council and said, look, do you want me to go out and get somebody that's more expensive? We got it in the minutes.
Yeah, I saw the minutes.
Right.
I second the motion.
You seconded the motion, and it was unanimous that we be allowed to go to the other party, knowing that probably going to run more than that. So that's why we went over on that. It wasn't, uh, nobody was not paying attention. It's just that once you get started, you want it finished, and that's what you have to do.
I was like you when you thought it was gonna be a small amount. And when I seconded that motion, I seconded it not because I wanted you to spend any particular amount of money, but because I wanted to be open for discussion. I had no idea, as you said you didn't, that it was going into that much money, and I still think it needed to, uh, figure that amount needs to come before council. I understand your reason. I hope you can understand mine.
Well, how can you bring it before council? I'm just asking, I don't know. I don't know how you bring it.
Well, that's open now, so it doesn't matter anymore.
When it, but.
Or get, maybe we get quotes and, you know, bring them before council. I mean, I just knew that, but, I mean, I, I don't know. I would get, probably get quotes and then bring them before council and see.
But, but if you don't know what the problem is, then you gotta find the problem. The quotes are not going to, they go, you get a quote from somewhere, they're gonna say, this amount of money is gonna, what it's gonna cost you if we don't run into any other problems that are un- unknown. And since it was underground, there was no way that anybody could've told it's gonna cost you X amount of dollars to get this fixed, so.
Can we go back to the company who caused it and?
Can, but it's just, all it's gonna do is gonna cost you some legal money that they're not going to be able to pay for it.
Who's going?
The fellow that originally caused the problem, when they cut out all the lights to the tennis court, apparently, somebody cut the lights going up the street at the same time underground. So therein lies the problem.
They should have insurance though, that takes care of that, right?
I, I don't think so, but.
Well, we shouldn't be contracted, we don't have insurance.
We can, uh.
Yeah, insured.
That's clear.
I think he's got insurance.
Yeah. Thank God, done.
I think he has insurance.
Well, then that's something that's insurance we cover.
We're, like I said, with y'all, if, if you're requesting that, that we do that, that's exactly what we'll do.
How much over five thousand did it go?
Uh, three, almost four thousand dollars.
Four, so you told me eight. You told me eight thousand, five hundred. Well, you told me four, so we talking about two different things?
No, we're talking about the same thing. We're talking about another bill that came in today for two days, putting.
More?
So how, well, so when they, how they got?
The total was eight.
Huh?
He's four thousand more, so that's nine thousand, so.
Huh?
Uh, weren't it eight-ish, something?
Eight, between eight and nine.
It was eighty-five something.
Okay, well, that's probably.
Yeah.
But you didn't get another bill now, did you?
It was the same one.
Oh, God. Thank goodness.
This was the bill.
The bill came in, we paid part of it until he finished the rest of it. We didn't pay the whole bill.
Yeah, I thought you meant it was an additional full ass dollars.
We had to, um, had to get a bucket truck to go to every light, individual light up there, and change out the ballast and the bulbs.
Now, see, that's the place you could've stopped, because we could've voted on whether we wanted to spend that extra money to do that. I know your argument is gonna be that it's better to do it while you're there, but those things could've lasted years. We don't know how long it would've lasted.
I think most of them were blown out.
How could they be blown out?
Only, when they put a tester on them, only one.
That's fast.
Only one of all the fourteen came on. One light.
So, yeah, we need to go after the one that caused the problem then. I wouldn't bring that one. And also, what, back from Ms. Collins, we should, should we still decrease that amount? That, you know, that you had come before council first, even though this situation already been done. But that way in the future, we won't get done on one like that.
The minutes I looked at, Wendell, looked to me like the county was where you made the two references to that was probably the guilty party.
That's right. The counties wanted to cut the wire in the driveway.
Well, they can make that picture.
We thought that was the problem.
Well, that was more than that.
Oh, it wasn't even but a penny peach of it. They fixed that. The county fixed that themselves.
Okay.
We called them, I called them out there immediately, and they fixed it. And, but what we were afraid of, that once that piece of machinery cut that wire, that it might have pulled it loose somewhere else.
I gotcha, okay.
But it wasn't. All that was still intact above.
So the county fixed that part?
County fixed their part. I'm perfectly happy. In fact, they fixed it back.
Cause I went back trying to figure out, um, from the minutes, what was going on.
Are you sure that we even tell the, the company that did the problem, that they did it? Did anybody find or call and let them know anything? Or we just let it?
Not yet. Uh, he will be in here within the next two days, and we will face him face to face and tell him and show him what.
So when, so when did it get done? Cause we've been a long time since the ten.
They've been out there for two years.
It didn't.
For two years, huh?
What did it, what do you mean?
When was the wiring's cut?
Wiring's cut was we, when we took the tennis courts out.
So how long ago was that?
Uh, be two years ago in the spring.
And they covered this? So we should've done something back there back then, so.
Didn't know anything about it. Till we hooked everything back up, we didn't know anything about it.
When did we hook everything back up?
It's been a while, too long, cause I've been bringing it up from time to time. In fact, it was the last night when we.
We didn't realize what had really happened until two weeks ago, one month ago, a week and a half ago, when, uh, he was out there. So we didn't know the extent of the damage until then. We thought all the time that, that we fixed the problem in the driveway and the box to the, just to the right of the driveway, that that was gonna take care of it. Then when that didn't fix it, we figured that what had happened when they broke the wires in the ground, that it caused a surge to go through the system and blow out all the transformers. That would've been the next logical thing, but that wasn't it, so.
Well, but we still have talked about, I want, I called Wendell three times to see about two different things that had concerned me for a long time. One, I was at amount of money in Turin and Grantville, and, no, Turin and Morland both have a five hundred dollar cap. Uh, Grantville has a cap, but they have to come together on the telephone, it's a ten thousand dollar, but they have to still come together on the telephone. They don't have an official meeting, but they have to come together on the telephone to agree.
Um, now what is the cap?
On that's, theirs is ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
But they have to get together on the telephone to agree.
Anything over what do they get together on the phone?
And they have, that's what I just said. It's, wait, let me see. No, no, I take it back. Oh, God, let me see if I can move my wife. Uh, twenty-five hundred. But they also have a city manager that falls into a different category, so the mayor, that, the manager, the mayor falls into the twenty-five hundred and has to have a consensus on the telephone.
Right.
Turin and Morland have a five hundred dollar cap. And all three of them can afford an attorney to come to their meetings.
Now, the twenty-five hundred, uh, now that's on the mayor, but the city manager now.
Has more.
Has more.
But you have the city manager.
What does he have?
Ten.
Ten thousand. In the past, I'm telling you what was in the past. Y'all can change it any way you want to for the future. The mayor has acted as unpaid as the city manager in Sharpsburg. Goes all the way back to when they built this building. So, uh, I think you, you'll go back and look what's happened over the last two years as far as the park and everything is concerned, that the mayor has acted as the city manager on all of that. Does anyone?
There's also a far difference in that they've got three thousand people and we got three hundred. So we shouldn't have, the need should not be nearly as great. Well, that's just my opinion. There's other people with other opinions, I'm sure.
Tell me what you want.
Now, which, which one was Turin again, Ms. Collins?
Turin's, Turin and Morland, which are more on size of five hundred. They're, uh, I didn't write, yeah, Turin, uh, Morland's got four hundred and twenty-two people, Turin has got right about the same as we do. And Grantville's got three thousand, two hundred and forty-one. They also got a lot of other stuff going in Grantville that we don't have. They got police and, uh, everything. They got everything a regular town has that we don't have.
Like I said, they got the city manager.
Yeah, they got everything. They, they like a real town. That doesn't sound good, does it? We're a real town, we're just a real little town.
I think five hundred.
So you're saying that the.
At least that way we'd know what's going on too. I mean, but then we're gonna have to have discussions about stuff and be surprised.
So if we start to purchase an item that costs over five, five hundred dollars, I say we, let's talk about the mayor first. Five hundred dollars, then I need to call all council to get approval to go over the five.
Oh, we can do, we could say a consensus on the phone amount for some what, if everybody agree to it, whatever. This is my opinion.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
So you want some real numbers, right?
I want some real numbers and some real reasoning. Um, you, you know, obviously, you, it, it seems like you're dissatisfied with the judgment that has been made in the past.
No, sir, I'm not telling, you're not doing a job, um, don't think that.
And what is the issue?
It's just, I, I mean, I took this role as in the help, and when it comes to my household, I know what's going, what money going. And, uh, and when I was married, my husband knew what was going on. I just didn't do that by, you know, I didn't know it first. I mean, we, uh, we try to be concerned about city, so, I mean, just to make sure everything get done right and get done properly, and also if everybody disagree where the money should go, um, I think we should just agree on together, and that way everybody would be in the same loop, the one everybody got to do, know what's going on, no question, no sin. I'm gonna, this is not our money, it's the city money. We should, we should manage it.
Believe me, I squeeze every dollar.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I could say you wasn't.
We'd have never been able to do all this unless we squeezed every dollar as far as we can. I think you'll agree with that.
As I know.
Right. So, that's what I'm saying. Uh, if we're doing it as accountability, that's fine, but if it's, you know, questioning the judgment that has already taken place, I take offense, so.
We wanna participate, Wendell. I do. I wanna participate.
That, that tickles me pink. That really does. So you're saying you're gonna leave it at five, or you're gonna leave it at a thousand?
I'm not gonna do anything. I think our group is gonna decide that.
That's what I'm saying.
You want me, I'm suggesting five.
I'm saying you. I'm talking collectively, the council. What does the council put on that figure?
For a phone call, everything over five. I'm gonna call y'all every Thursday.
It's all right, okay.
You spend that much?
Every time I pay a bill that's over five hundred dollars, I got a call.
What do we have to say? Well, see, we need to, that's what we need to know now.
I'm asking.
Donna, that's what we need to know. We don't, I don't know that. I didn't know that. So I need to know something about that.
You ask for.
I don't know what to ask for sometimes, honestly.
So, you know what, just to be honest, say so, yeah, everybody over five hundred.
All right.
And a phone call ain't gonna hurt nobody. The text if you have to, voice bill.
Okay.
If it's documented, do a text.
After, I, let's say, let's, cause reality is that we're not gonna be able to get in touch with everybody when we need it. If, like, if I have to go rent a piece of equipment or something like that, I, if I get the majority, are you satisfied with that? If I try to get in touch with everybody, but I can only reach three of you, are you, want me to wait till I hear from everybody?
Majority, three, that's majority, yeah. I mean, do you think that, I mean, is there ever anything that is just so pressing that?
Has been in times, yeah.
Hot often though, I mean, it's not.
Not at all.
Not every week, right? So, I mean.
Uh, just asking, just asking, cause, uh, like I couldn't get in touch with you today. And, uh, tried, but, uh, couldn't get through at the time. So anyway, we all got our lives, we all got our jobs, so, um, I changed.
Can I go ahead and clarify a couple of them? Waste track, or the trash service, it's like thirteen hundred dollars a month. Is that okay? Well, then that, but.
I'm gonna ask you.
Then the submit.
You said it all, five hundred dollars to make the phone call.
Submit a list of the things that'll go routinely be over that amount.
Do what?
Submit a list, tell us the list of the things that'll go be over that amount, and that would just be automatic.
Yeah, lots of like trash pickers.
Just like you just mentioned, there's several things.
Reoccurring bills.
Yeah, we've got.
Right, yeah. That'll go be over that, that would be.
I think we're just.
Presumed, yeah, okay, I presumed that we presumed that.
Yeah, well, recurring.
Well, you're right, you need to clarify, and I didn't think to do that. But, uh, the, the things that we know we're gonna have every single time, go ahead and approve them at one time. And they, they're gonna be done, you know that.
Yeah, gotta be done. Okay, what else?
If I can think of another, I'm running a lot someone.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
Well, we got, well, we got the.
I wouldn't rate for that.
We got the grass cutting.
Yeah.
It's reoccurring, they, uh, clash pickup.
All right.
That's the one I'm talking, I'm talking about.
Let's go. Yeah, let's talk about the grass cutting.
Do we have a contract for them? Cause, I mean, it was in the budget.
We have, we have.
There's no amount, then we went over it.
Contract's expired.
We have, we have a contract. And what I'm fixing to ask, do you want to continue the grass cutting in town? Or do you want to let the grass grow on the shoulders?
No, we want the grass to be cut, but we want a contract, and I love, like, I've been complaining myself before, I ain't down with council. They don't cut the ditch kaput like they're supposed to.
Anytime you see that they didn't do it, give us a call. And, um.
So, what is the contract for? How much? We already, so y'all have it. It's expired. Expired?
Uh.
How long have we got there on that end?
It had to be right away, cause it couldn't have been long.
It's been a year.
Has it been a year? Only on part of it. See, we added, we added the park and we took the downtown. and we took the downtown away from Adamson and put that on at a cheaper rate. So we've added to the contract, in essence renewing it within the last four months.
That didn't come from council either, you told us something. So you're saying we now have a contract with them? A written contract, a verbal?
With the grass cutting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got a verbal, I mean, we got a written contract with them.
We have a contract, now, we'll look at the date and see if it's time to renew, if we can, we'll, you know.
I'm talking about the old ones, the one I know this, but I didn't know we renewed it.
We just added to it.
Does it specifically say where they cut?
Yeah, very specific, and that's not where they cut.
You and I are lucky, cause really, we own state highway. And of course, D O T's supposed to do that, they only do it maybe twice a year.
But we still cut it.
Yeah, so that's a.
So was that the contract, you guys still cut it, you're busy doing that, so?
It's, it was in the original contract to cut that, and over on bit four also.
So it was, so it's in the contract, but then we cut it, so.
How many feet?
That's why I said we get lucky.
Yeah, okay.
To the center of the ditch.
To the center of the ditch?
That's what you said, but that's not what is written, it's written by feet, how many feet? Don't you remember we talked about that?
But it's, uh, what it is generally, it comes to the center of the ditch, uh, and I think that would suffice in most cases, but than putting a, a footage onto it, but we'll put whatever y'all want to put in there.
So.
Like for instance, coming up down Tarantane, right after you come off fifty-four on the right side, we've got it to the center of the ditch, but it's about twenty feet rather than the ten foot that would be in most residential areas. So, most cases we get a little bit more. Some places it's really tough, after you go past your house on up, right before you get to your house, a really bad ditch that they have to cut by weed eater, they can't get down here there, so it's really tough.
I usually get that most of, up that grass.
Yeah.
They, they cut grass for professionals, so they should maybe do it somehow. Yeah, I know it's difficult, but.
We will pull up, uh, tomorrow the agreement, and if it nature and you, and we'll go ahead and bring it before council.
Should we get quote, I mean, should we get quotes on it, just, uh?
Can. Uh, we got quotes when we did that, we got bids, uh, when we got that one.
We need to see if it's self-renewing, I don't know if it is or not. It's not, because I looked, we had said it last time, unless I've, oh, look, I don't think it is.
All right, are we, anything else on the cash management, we changed that, and, uh, anything else that needs to come up?
I mentioned bids, did we talk about that, I think there needs to be a party which bids we get. I'll be having help with any of this, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll hook this up.
Uh, now, Ruth, finish what you're saying about, uh, bids.
I think, I don't think for every single thing, but I think there needs to be a cap that, that, um, you need to get bids, and I don't know what it is, some, like, some ideas. Or do you think we needed it all?
Oh, no.
I know it's not required by the state.
We, we needed on such things as grass cutting, um, and we did get them. Uh, some of them were twice what we get charged by these people. I mean, they're right next door, they rent from us, they, they do a good job. Uh, we added the park and the, we used to have two contracts, uh, two agreements. Uh, we had all the rest of the town, and then the downtown area was with Mr. Adamson, where it had been for many years. So we terminated that and put it on the, with the other at a better rate, so we were better off that way. Anything else on, uh?
They keep mentioning financial committee in this thing, and do we have a, we, wasn't Keith on the financial committee?
Mm-hmm.
So don't we?
Now we got, assuming right here on the finance committee. Me, Donna, and Stan.
So how would you choose the financial committee?
The mayor can appoint the financial committee.
That's the only way, is that the only way, Sam?
Yeah, we just got, just, uh, the, uh, city clerk and the mayor and one, one council person.
But could you have more than one council person?
Could.
What if she said hello?
Why does she have one?
There'd be a meeting for them, there.
One.
There'd be a meeting for them, probably three of us, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, good, you can do that, you can do that, we'd have to have a public there.
So you, uh, so y'all have a financial committee, who's the financial officer? I know I saw that.
That's it.
Donna.
I just wanna know the names of them.
So what's your function then, cause I've never been really clear.
What's the function?
Yeah.
Uh, every quarter we have a meeting and go over expenditures, uh, sheet is handed out with, everything is almost like going over the budget in every, every.
It's kinda like what I've been doing. Want some lunch?
Mm, of course.
So then should we, now we haven't gotten a report on that, should we be getting that, a report on what you? I've read the state thing, and there's a lot of information that, and I don't get anything we asked for, but there's a lot of things that's mandated by the state that says we should get. I'll, I'll send you a list, I got it here, right, it's, it's in the, it's not necessarily in a chart, but part of it is, but it's a state code.
Good, that'd be good.
Whatever you want.
Well, can we, okay, just ask, but can we just get it, I ask, y'all just give it to us?
Yeah, well, I mean, I will say, what, what, what you want.
I mean, yeah, I mean, but you can ask for it, cause I can't just come up and say, well, that won't do it.
Well, I'm just saying everything I have to read, cause y'all just.
Information is what you do, yeah. She can get about anything, information, can't you? How much you can get?
Can, what, repeat that one.
Information, you can get about any info, a council member can get, uh, folks too for that, I can get about anything they want. And she's real efficient, I have to say that, she can get it to you before you turn around to her. That's a comfort, Donna.
Okay. So, I mean, um, if we're not hearing every court meeting y'all have, I mean, we're not, and not told what date, could you just give it to us, rather than be, just like, like doing our, our counseling?
No, no.
Yeah.
That would have topped it when they had to ask, we got enough paper.
Mayor, let me read this, cause then that wouldn't be the mayor, it's the whole financial committee, it says a finance officer, officer, that's you.
That's Donna.
Not you.
Not me.
We need to get approval by two thirds of the finance committee, and then that gets, that gets one more person, right? So then the, basically, that is the mayor, okay. Okay, I'm.
No, if, if I'm, Stan can do it. I mean, it looks like it's two hours.
Okay, divorce, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But there's still that limit set. Let me, let me rephrase that what I said then, I think the fi, mayor and the finance committee needs to, before they spend a huge amount of money. But with the work session, we can deal about it later.
Do you understand what's, repeat what you're saying.
I'll do it.
There's limits, what she's talking about is there is a limit for one person, for me, finance officer to spend, and then there.
Yeah.
There.
That was originally.
What, what I can spend requires a two third of the finance committee. But, but if we get above five thousand, I think it says, then the finance committee pers, pretty much has to come before the council.
Okay, so isn't it?
Well, if we changing that to five hundred.
That's changed to five hundred.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can see that push, all right. Not now, later.
Now, you're, which is, I'm, I'm very glad that it's happening, you're putting, uh, some extra work on yourselves, and extra recognition on yourselves, which we're glad that you are, because in the past, nobody really give a rip, uh, about some of the stuff, and they have, have no faith in the people that were sitting in here, whether it be me or somebody in the past, to do what's right. And I think it, I think it has been. But anyway, um, anything else on the cash management, before we go on to the next one? Okay, sign ordinance.
All this stuff you brought up.
Huh? Sign ordinance.
Sign ordinance, you, you went.
Yeah, I have the sign ordinance, I would like to know what other people think, I've never known anything except what I think. And I like to know what the people, everybody else thinks about the sign ordinance and enforcement and so forth. Cause that's what I would like it to be, what everybody agrees on, and I would, the one thing I wrote about it was, agree on the ordinance as it stands, enforce it as written, and uniformly, uh, make some amendments. In other words, enforce what we got, amend it. And I like knowing what people think about it.
Well, what signs you talking about, cause you don't wanna complain about signs that I've never.
You know, see those millions of signs they have, I mean, then let's drop it. That's my, that's my whole.
What signs you talking about?
That's my whole point.
What signs?
When I started doing the sign thing, I found out that half the town was having the sign ordinance enforced, and the other half wasn't, and that's a slight exaggeration. Did you know that sometimes, that some of the stores in town don't have, didn't have to follow the sign ordinance, they just put up a sign?
Like a business sign?
Uh-huh. And some of them are made to, and some of them are not. And some people are allowed to leave up signs, and some people are not, and I didn't even know that until I started picking up signs. And I think we, the need to follow it, is it's written, agree on how it's gonna be followed, or not follow it. And that sounds reasonable, that's three choices, do it like it's supposed to, change it, or don't do it at all.
Well, you make it sound like that we are telling some people that you gotta have a sign ordinance, and some you don't, it's like, when you open a business, you should come in for, you know, the business license, your sign ordinance and all this stuff.
You may not tell them that, Donna, but that's what's happened. I'm sure you didn't go around and tell people you can put up a sign, but they do it, and that's what I'm saying, and if you, the whole group wants to drop it, I'll drop it, that'd be the last word I'm gonna say about it.
You're talking about picking up signs, what signs you talking about picking up?
A lot of them in front of your house, across the street. There'll be all the black signs that are all over the place.
Oh, you mean like?
Rosewood.
Those, those signs, I'm also talking about, um, the signs that's painted on the side of the building of the tattoo place. Frigid Frog's got up a banner sign that's been up forever. Um, Shoemate's got some signs, he's got his legitimate signs, but he's got some stuck up signs. And I would like to either enforce it or not, I wanna forget it frankly. But legally, legally, legitimately. And if nobody's interested in that, but me, then I immediately drop it.
What I said to you recently is, it has to have a stopping point from the old and a starting point from the new. If you go back to everybody in town that's got a sign and said, that doesn't comply, you've got to take it down.
That's an ordinance already, well.
That's what I'm saying, if you go back now and enforce the ordinance to the letter, and say you've got to take those signs down and replace them with complying ordinance signs, then you're gonna have a problem, you're gonna be a mess, but if you have a starting point that says, okay, any sign put up after January one of this year has to come in and comply to the ordinance, the rest of them will grandfather it in until such time as they come down. They're non-complying entities, and once they come down, they can't be replaced. Or once the business changes hands, it has to comply to the new regulation. Now, does that suit everybody, or do you want to go back and say, no, everybody has to comply and?
I'm having to say, I'd say following the ordinance.
I'm just asking you.
That's what I said, and they're still not talking about the real estate signs, do you wanna leave them, or? I think they look horrible, but if everybody likes them, but me, then I, I can live with it.
I can see what you're saying about that, but I think if they start putting them up, like you picking them up, I would call the, somebody's, that company or development is paying somebody for them up. I would go to the people that's paying them, so if you don't, we're gonna start fighting you.
He's already done that, he's already warned them, and they're still doing it, now that's my point.
No. Here's, here's what you and I talked about, we talked about, if you've been in real estate any length of time, you know what happened several years ago in reference to the signs. With a really big problem in the county as a whole. So they fought it out for about a year, year and a half, and then finally the county said, I'll tell you what, you're going to comply, you're not gonna be able to put your real estate signs out there anytime you want to, but we will allow you to put them out there from Friday evening till Sunday evening, then you have to take them down, or you're in violation. All the real estate companies complied, and it has worked through the county. What I'm saying is, can we not go along with the county regulation? Or do you want to be different from the county and the other towns and say, no, no real estate signs? Not gonna make us real popular with the real estate people.
I think the real estate house for sale signs are different from builders that are building in Sonora and Harson and all around, and sticking ninety-nine right here in town.
Yeah, they put them all, I mean, there, there's some right down the road, so it's not like it, you know, I mean.
And actually, he's probably getting paid per sign, so he's killing, making a killing off of it. And also, they've torn up a yard pretty bad, which I think the town needs to fix.
Town cannot fix that. The town cannot go on that, that, uh, state right away and fix those problems. Now, we can call the state and get, try to get the state out here to fix it, but we don't have any jurisdiction over those ruts on one fifty-four.
Okay, you said, you saw a mess, so why? Okay.
But I can't tell you that the sign people did it, I cannot tell you that. I, could have been somebody run off the road, got stuck when they had the ice storm.
That's not what happened.
Okay, all I can tell you is that I cannot prove when it happened.
Okay, that's not that, you're not gonna do it, that's okay, I'll get that, okay? But I wanna, I would like to forget it, um, the signs what to do with it, with all of us, not just me.
I'd like for, I mean, I'd like for the town to not look so hodgepodgey. You know? Like with it all, the different signs, and, I mean, but that's just my opinion.
Now, go ahead and finish what you're saying, please.
I mean, just, uh, you know, if we did enforce the sign thing, does that, I mean, is, in the sign ordinance, does it clarify that all the signs look similar, or? I've never read through it, obviously.
I was talking more about the real estate and those junky signs that they put, not the real estate house signs, cause I.
Right, you mean the, the new home directions.
Yeah, that's put up here, that make it look like a junkie, is the ones I'm talking about, not necessarily the, um.
Let's go to a lot of them, I, like I said, I'm paying attention to it.
There's a lot of them.
You get used to it, I think, but they were so bad, a couple of weeks ago, I went, I patched them, cause I said I won't touch them again, remember I said that at a meeting, I would not touch those signs again? I went back and they looked so bad, I turned around and came back to pick them up.
They're on fifty-four?
They're on, right now, it's pretty close to your house. So, I'm, nine.
There's just gonna be more, cause they're that same building.
If they want me to buy a half, they, but not, depending on me to look at the sign, I don't think.
Nine between the triangle, I mean, between the house, I mean, East Carolina and the back, there were nine signs. Five of them were the same company.
Well, yes, it's the same, but we're.
Do they leave them up, or do, are you picking them up?
I've been picking them up.
We're talking about Friday evening till Sunday evening. All day Saturday and all day.
I don't have a problem at all, as I do pick them up.
Um, what about limiting them to a number of signs?
I want to do what everybody wants to do.
That's what I'm saying, I'm talking to.
How many signs you picked up, you said?
Huh?
How many signs did you say you picked up from?
Nine at one time, nine, from East Carolina, from East Carolina. Right, then with the stop sign, it's to the back, nine signs.
To the bank?
To that back down the corner.
That's about five, too many.
Nine.
Do you want to take them up altogether, or do you want to limit them?
I'm what you're saying, I'm not gonna make the decision. You know I have to go back.
I'm waiting, I'm talking to the whole group.
Y'all, leave this talk, I'm thinking, I mean.
I mean, I'd, one per neighborhood, if, I mean, if everybody votes to keep them up. I mean, I think they look junky, but that's just me.
Too many for the, what's that, a quarter mile or that?
That's what I'm saying, they, they put them at every stop sign, like you.
And in between.
If they were to go, you'd still know where the neighborhood was.
You get, two should be enough from there, cause they wanted the corner Tarantane, wanted the stop sign.
They don't do this way. They don't do this way as bad as they do that way.
What if they say they can put one out? I mean, that's, gets the point across and they're still signed.
One per neighborhood that they're, they're pushing.
But they're doing about twenty neighborhoods down.
Well, we're in, how many neighborhoods are in Shoresburg?
That, that's another thing, we could win it to our town. They could always put it just outside the city limits.
It's, they're all in Turin and Moreland.
It's all in all that.
Yeah.
If you're right for Brooks, they're all over Brooks pointing to the, the new houses in Sonora.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I think I'd get a job with him. I bet that truck driver makes a bum.
It is your pleasure.
The signs, me leaving them?
I'm just thinking, I mean, you don't wanna hurt them, but I mean, put a number on it, but like, like put them out Friday and make sure they're picked up on Sunday evening.
They do that, and they, the guys that, they do that religiously because the guy that puts them out is contracted, and that's his job. He knows he has to pick them up.
So, how did Miss Polly end up picking them up then?
She picked them up during the.
I don't really remember what, I don't remember what, it was, day I picked them up, the last time.
Now, they're, they're good about that. They know that they have to comply to that regulation.
So, if we give them to Friday to Sunday, we still not gonna limit to how many, right? Are we gonna limit to how many also? If we, uh, if they're gonna do from Friday to Sunday, are we gonna put a limit on how many from Friday to Sunday?
That's what I'm suggesting.
I would do Friday to Sunday too. Like I was saying, from East Carolina to the bank, two should, should be enough.
On that road, and two on fifty-four?
True inside the city limits. True inside the city limits.
Not just inside the city limits, I guess.
Do they ever put them on main street, main path and that?
They don't do, they don't, they do, they do up between here and the triangle, they do the place. Always sixteen.
Are they about, are they only on sixteen or something?
Oh, yeah.
I think, I do it.
Now.
They would have to charge as much for houses if they quit putting up signs.
All right, now, when you're talking about one sign, is that one sign per neighborhood that they're pushing, or one sign period?
No, not per neighborhood, cause she said they pushing at least, they can sometime pushing at least twenty neighborhoods, so that means twenty sign.
Well, they go in and pop up a neighborhood and quit. So, and they, you know, they've got many projects going on at one time, so.
Do they have company names on them? I don't know, I, where I live, I don't see this stuff, so, do they have company?
David Lindsay is who it is most of the time.
Put that name on them? Maybe just one per, or two or three per company?
They're a family. It's Jeff Lindsay, David Lindsay, and Dustin Shaw. They're all, they all build together and they're a family. So, where you have one sign, you have two more signs. So, it's, it's not one sign at a time, it's three signs at a time.
I was just trying to limit the company, not the neighborhoods. You said there's some neighborhoods, I thought maybe it was just the company that you make and get one, two, or three, or however many, per just that company. And then I would have, we cut down on the neighborhoods. See what I'm saying?
Right.
I, I don't care. I did. Also, is any, they, they, this is the second time they made a mess on the grounds. You know, they tore up the, back there, the dead end, uh, East Carolina School about two months ago. They rode down there and made a god awful mess.
Then where our woke on the Shoresburg side?
Yeah, I reported that at the time. So, they driving, they presuming to drive all over the place, tearing up the ground, doing it. This is an older man with a steering there.
Y'all wanna think about it, come up with a solution, and rather than trying to do it right here, you wanna think about it and look at them this weekend and.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, just say, hey, what, what was that this week? Work for them.
Was that this past weekend?
Yeah.
No, not this past, it was the one before.
So, they're not every weekend?
Yes.
I haven't been down there this, I haven't been that, I don't go that way all the time.
They're up every weekend.
And pay attention to them and make sure it's Friday to Sunday.
Yeah, see, see what neighborhoods they're pushing, which, what the signs say, and how many, and where they are, then we'll get back together and say, hey, why don't we do, I mean, we're sitting here kinda.
I approve, that's a good idea.
All right, we'll look at, we'll look at that over the weekend and come up with a solution.
Just pay attention, like the next couple of weekends, bring it back?
No.
Yeah, that'd work.
Bring it back the next.
You have your sister, any sister there?
You can pick out your ones and I can pick mine.
Yeah, y'all, it's the worst.
Yeah, we know y'all putting them out and getting paid.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. We get paid while I'm making that.
I can use your, put out campaign signs also.
Cause I remember these ladies up here, this business, they went out of business though, didn't they? I mean, you told them they can put signs on the corner as long as they do Friday to Sunday, Sunday, right?
There's, there's somebody in there now.
What I'm saying is when they were there.
I saw that this morning.
Did you see that? There's somebody in there now, they hadn't got a business license, they hadn't talked to us, we didn't know who it is, but they got signs out.
Who, oh.
One of these ladies were up here.
In the little way there.
Yeah.
So, what we do is like, what happened?
At least they, couple of years.
Doing fun part.
I'm exaggerating. How did you call them yet?
So, the person that ran, would they get a business license?
Are they operating a business? Or they just in there?
I just saw the signs.
I don't know, I wouldn't know it, I haven't stopped it.
I haven't seen anybody in the building, but I've seen the signs.
Yeah, I've seen the signs.
Maybe they just.
What I was saying, it was reference, the weekend sign, you know, you told them they can put a sign back the corner of Taragon, one fifty-four, and put it out Friday and pick it up Sunday.
Yeah. And auction places, same way, they put a sign out for their auction. Y'all, y'all ain't have a problem with it? I don't have a problem with it.
They take them up usually.
Yeah, now, this past weekend, they didn't, but I don't know what happened to, but, uh, they usually very good about picking them up. Moving on to the library, next item on the, uh, conversation.
And I put that one on there too, cause a library's complicated. And I think we need to form a, I think we need to form a, say, a projects committee to deal with these different things, which could work for the signs at that time. But to do a project committee
I'm sorry.
of people to work on these things and bring it to the council. And the library's complicated, cause Clay at one time made the motion that we hire somebody part-time and we never need to get around to that. Uh, it's open four hours a week, right, Ms. Staley?
No, just two.
Oh, just two. And, uh, she's cataloging all the books, but physically, she's not able.
What?
I thought you were cataloging the books.
Oh, no, there, if I had twenty hours a week, I might can catalog all those books.
Well, my point is that you need help.
They're complicated then.
You need help.
Well, I don't think you're ever gonna need to catalog those books.
Not catalog, okay.
I just think we need to.
I'm messing this up now.
Catalog in order. I mean, cataloging is a very intricate thing.
I thought, she said she was doing. Hmm? I thought he said that's what you were doing.
No, I'm arranging them. I'm not, I'm not cataloging. I may catalog some of the nonfiction, but I'm gonna catalog the fiction.
Well, anyway, and I didn't care about cataloging anyway. My point is that we spending around twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars a year on the library. Most of it goes for utilities. It's not open all that much. And I would like for us to get a committee of people, not necessarily us, but us, maybe one or two of us and some other people, to work out a plan to do something constructive with the library, like open it more with volunteers. You could rent it, it's little. I, back that, about a year ago, I was hunting high and low for a small place to rent for about ten people. That would be perfect for.
For like a study hall or something like that?
Just anything, yeah, for a group of people, book club.
Oh, yeah.
Children's thing.
I like the summer program idea.
A summer program for children, but it needs to be, it's not in very good shape. This, the, not the books, but the, it's just not in good shape inside. It's not conducive to look to work, and I think we need more than just Ms. Staley to try to get the job done. It's a big job. And it was not remodeled when the outside was remodeled. It doesn't look.
Oh, they remodeled outside but not inside?
Yeah.
Put a new bathroom in it.
Yeah.
Remodel the bathroom in the back, it's real.
But to me, it's a big waste, just sitting there only for, four hours, two hours a week, or one?
Two hours a week.
Can I be, can I, uh, see if I can get some volunteers?
If they, if they're qualified to sit up there, yes.
Now, what's qualified, well, we'll talk about qualified.
Uh, we don't want some high school kid up there on the computers like we were talking about earlier, uh, doing stuff they shouldn't be doing. We need somebody responsible, like the gentleman that used to help us, uh, Mr. Yakey.
Mm-hmm. He would come back and help.
Yeah, he was, he was very good, uh, knew what he was doing, kept the place clean, just like, so, uh, but, that's what I said, when I meant qualified, I meant somebody that's, uh, responsible.
Well, I would not get anybody I didn't think was responsible.
Right. Yeah, look into it.
But I wouldn't get a child either, I wouldn't get younger, that younger person, because.
I asked, I called the high school to see if they had a, uh, library science and, of course, they didn't. Uh, Margaret says they don't, not many schools anywhere that have a course in library science, till you get college ranks. But, um.
There are legal reasons you cannot hire a student. You, le- legally, you can't really leave a student in there. You can't allow children under eighteen to use a computer without parental consent.
I was talking about older people anyway.
I know, but, I mean, there's just lots of reasons, you don't wanna get a teenager. A young people, young person to work in there, because when you open up computers to children under eighteen.
Well, I understand all that. Yeah, I understand that completely. How do you go about forming a committee to, to work on that?
Just have, start with a nucleus, who's gonna head the committee, one of us, and then you get some, uh, volunteers to uh, be on the committee, and then that committee goes out and tries to find the volunteers and sets up the erase button, comes in, works, helps to keep it clean, all that stuff. But start with the nucleus, start with the, one of us, and get the committee formed first.
Can we have two of us? As long as we don't have three?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, two of us and then some more people?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, by all means.
I would just like to see it used and down the way the car looks great.
Oh, did it though, looks real good. I'm anxious to see what it's gonna look like in the spring, once flowers hit the bloom in the.
That's a cute little building.
Oh, yes.
It's a precious building.
It is.
Now, did you see it before we fixed it, uh, it was an old block building?
I never saw.
I'll send you a picture, it looks, yeah, you did, you're talking about a difference.
Same thing with this one, this one, the block building.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, so you, y'all are going to set up a committee and, uh, work on the library. Now, we'd like for you, since Margaret has been working on.
Oh, counting her being there.
Yeah, uh, run things through her, because not many towns has got a, somebody with a master's degree in library science.
You wanna be the chairperson?
No, don't wanna be the chairperson.
You said run through her, she has to be the chairperson. Oh, you wanna be the boss, I'm gonna let you be the boss.
But, uh.
Well, you'll need to form, to form the committee and a council meeting. After you get your members, you don't need to officially vote on it, the committee.
Right.
I was wondering.
And.
Any kind of committee that you come up with, like.
Now, one more question about the library and the committee. Can we also do other things with the libraries? In addition to the library, library, can you do like, if we could set up a way to have a, maybe a computer training session? I'm just making that up. Uh, a class of, um, meeting, or, does do any other thing in it besides a book?
That library should be treated just like any other library, anywhere else, it can be used for that thing, even, even, uh.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Even community meetings. Uh, we used to, when we were doing the pathways development, we had that thing packed full of people, uh, one time with a meeting. So, yeah, it can be used for other things.
Yeah, well, I just want to make that clear, cause I would need to be more than just a library.
We've had problems.
So, if, but if you do that, will it just be, uh, I'm sorry? Free to use, free to use the building? Maybe, just like, you know.
Do you say you could, you know, that'd be a need plus for the neighborhood. Let it be free for meetings for the residents. Good idea.
I mean, I.
It's a bonus for being in town, you getting to meet here free. Nobody'd probably use it, but it's given them something that looks like, you know, it's a gesture.
Yeah.
We can talk about that later.
By the way, I've got, uh, I've purchased, uh, a new lock. The lock's real bad on the door. So, I purchased a new lock and given it to the handyman to put in, but it's got a deadbolt and a regular lock bolt. And the deadbolt has to be opened from the inside with a key. I mean, that'll be a bit, for the, when you go up there, you're a little bit to look for. So, they can't break the glass out, reaching there and turn the deadbolt. They have to have a key inside also, so they can't open the door by pressing the window out. So, uh, we got a new lock, it's already purchased.
Has it ever, has it ever been broken into?
Doesn't need any by law.
The, the back part, uh, used to be an old restroom back in the back. It was broken into a bunch of times.
Really, where things happened in there and.
Yeah, we, we had to get rid of that, and.
Like when? Like how long?
Like when?
Oh, five, six, ten years.
And we spent a while. Whenever it was, we shut it down. Did they ever get the handicap, then that bathroom fixed it, for a while it was not handicapped accessed?
What is it?
It's one of a wall back that was not, uh, handicapped.
I don't know, I'll, I'll look at it and be sure that it is, cause the doorway is.
It may be, I'm asking if it was at one time.
The turnaround space is big enough for wheelchair. I don't know what's missing unless it's a grab bar.
I think the bars weren't there. I'll go check, I'll get the key checked.
Yeah, we'll look and see if the grab bars would be the only thing, if they're not there. And, uh, I get, if I did a handyman, we don't have a handyman. Anybody's got somebody who wants to work, let me know. Our handyman found a job, I'm glad for him.
I know a couple of handy people.
Ma'am?
I said, I know a couple of handy.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Cheek, okay.
Yeah, let us know, we're serious. We can't find anybody to do anything.
I will.
It, does he, do you know the people you're talking about?
Yeah, I use them for, you know, my properties that I have listed.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, let me know.
I will.
We have the Chromebooks that was, that was bought from the library.
What about?
Ma'am?
What about them?
I said, where are the Chromebooks that were bought from the library?
In the drawer right there.
In the library?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Anything else on the library? Y'all, y'all can get together and work out the committee, uh, good, good, good. Anything else on the library?
I hope you will.
Okay, follow me. Anything else on the work session? There was one other thing we wanted to talk about, about, uh, started, it came up earlier and I lost it. Give me a minute. Oh, I, I haven't explained to council why all of a sudden their mayor has got this pretty shiny head. So, any of you that don't know, I'm gonna tell you now, I hadn't said that in front of all of you in a regular meeting, cause it needs to come up informally in a work session. Uh, I've been on chemo and that's where my hair went, so, uh, now you know. It was gone with the wind.
So, you're not just being fashionable?
That's right. Let me tell you, I would not have done it in the winter time, no way. It's, uh, it's rather Irish, believe it. But if it went away, it'll come back, I hope. Anything else? There was something else, Donald, what was it? No, we, we, we hit on it earlier, let me look, just give me just one minute, that's all I need.
I had some questions, if you were gonna let the audience speak.
Yeah.
Um, I just been making notes, we didn't go through this. Fire marshal ain't gonna let you have that deadbolt. For library, it's gonna have to be the thumb turn. Not gonna let you have that.
What if you leave the key in it?
No.
No?
Just don't worry.
Cause it can lock somebody once, they're not gonna let that happen. 'Cause it can lock somebody's, they're not gonna let that happen, they're not gonna allow that. Um, sign ordinance. My opinion is it's been an ordinance for a long time, I think something that might help you enforce it is if it's given out to everybody that applies for business license, from the get-go, so everybody's aware of it. Now, if they don't read it, you can't make them read it, if they don't read it, and that's their fault, they send money to put sign up and then get a license. Um, I think personally, as a resident, it should be enforced for everybody up, since that ordinance has been in effect. Um, I don't think it's something that should just start now, I think you're gonna run into problems then with, um, favoritism. Unless there's a brand-new ordinance written up, typed dated, signed ordinance with current date, and that's the only way you're gonna protect yourself.
Repeat that, please, what?
What I'm saying is if you don't want to enforce the ordinance that's been in effect for all these years, you are now wanting to start clean, January two thousand eighteen, and enforce a new sign ordinance, you're gonna have to create a new sign ordinance dated two thousand eighteen. I don't think, me as a business owner, I'm gonna be upset if you enforce something on me that you don't on the company that was here in two thousand seventeen, and that ordinance has been in effect since what date, Polly? What year?
Oh, I don't know.
It goes.
Oh, a long time, two thousand two.
So, what I'm saying is that you're gonna have issues with that. Um, that's my opinion. I think the wall mural on the tattoo shop is hideous, absolutely hideous. Um, I can't believe nobody hasn't went in there and said something to them about that Gothic skeletal, does not fit our small-town, hey, town of Sharpsburg look. Um, I'm very disappointed that nobody has, I don't know, approached them.
I have one complaint.
I've not had a complaint at all.
I've not had the first complaint.
Well, I know everybody's seen it, and I don't, I don't think it looks old-town neighborly looking, is what I'm trying to say, I mean.
I figured it was approved, no, they don't have.
I mean, it's graffiti, and it looks like something you would see on a bridge and underpass going into Atlanta to be.
Right.
Um, that's my own opinion, as a resident, I think it's very unattractive. Um, it's setting a precedence also for companies that come in, new businesses that come in, so what one does, they think it's okay to do for another. That's where I'm saying you also don't have problems with these little real estate signs, um, all of them are not gonna communicate, it needs either be one or none.
Right.
Um, you, it's gonna be very hard to manage, if you wanna do a Friday to Sunday, that would work, but it's gonna be very difficult to enforce and manage a number of signs, you're gonna run yourself right if you're doing that. Unless we have a code enforcement officer, which, I don't know, we even have that.
We talk about one time to time, but we've never done.
Never done what?
Though, we've talked about those, code enforcement person.
We have a code enforcement person.
Then why not the enforcement?
The code enforcement officer should actually be enforcing the sign ordinance also.
Well, we, it's an on-call basis, in fact, that's the reason we went with a company, we will have, is they would take a home call, rather than giving us, be here anytime that they want to and send us a bill for the hours charged, um, so.
I mean, this is a small town, I think the sign enforcement could be addressed by a letter to the company, and that could be relatively easy and simple to, to enforce without involving a code enforcement officer, like with most things, if homeowners are violating, you know, my neighbors have a washer in their front yard. You know, I mean, that's, I know that's a code enforcement violation, I'm hoping they do something with it. Um, but if they don't, I'm sure a simple letter to their address, asking them to remove appliances that are sitting in their front yard,
Right.
um, to be done would handle that problem. Most of the time, people respond to letters.
Right, as you know, we kinda operate on a, uh, complaint basis, we get a complaint, we act on it. And, uh, I hadn't, hadn't got that one yet, about the washing machine, is it only?
Well, it's, it's more than that, I don't think it would hurt for a code enforcement officer to come to the town once a month and do a drive-through. You know, spend two hours and just see if they notice anything different, their eyes are fresh, ours are not, we see the same stuff every single day.
You don't see it.
Right, so that's just my own personal opinion.
I mean, one of your neighbors got a truck in the front yard.
It's the same one.
Same one. Oh, we have a problem.
There's a lot of untagged vehicles on Sunset.
Confronted them with that here about three months ago, and, uh, we got rid of two of the vehicles, that's all.
The untagged vehicle house?
Ma'am?
The untagged vehicle house? The, the house that has all the untagged vehicles? They have one tag and they move it from car to car.
You're kidding?
No, I'm not kidding. Not kidding at all about that. And I think the tag that they actually move is a dealer tag.
Does he still have the, the wrecker? He had a wrecker out there.
He works for a wrecker company.
Yeah.
But that's not the house that has all the untagged cars.
Oh, it's not?
No, that's the rental house on Sunset.
Which one has the untagged cars?
That usually has Mexicans that rent it, they have a big box truck in the backyard and.
Oh, all the way to the corner, all the way as you start around the curb.
Yes, that's the house that always has untagged vehicles, which I think is also against our ordinance. I think the ordinance says, your vehicle has to be tagged, and the tag cannot be over a year expired, I think that's what I have read in the ordinance. So, those are things is what I'm, is what I'm saying, that I think a code enforcement officer, once a month, whether they see it and they notate it, they come back, they address the letter, they send it out, or whatever, I think that's something that they.
We sent a letter to the house, and we've confronted the people on two separate occasions, and then we found out the lady that owned it, she lives down south of here, so I go down to take a letter to her, personally deliver it, so I get out there and they got a gate. And the house is way back off the road, big beautiful home, so, we're just gonna have to send it registered to her, because she oughta be able to get rid of them if they can't get rid of the junk, that big box truck's been out there for ages.
Long time.
Yeah. So, we're glad you mentioned that, we will send that letter to her, registered.
Um, you mentioned that committees have to be approved before council.
Say that again, I'll dig you.
You mentioned committees have to be approved before council.
Yeah, okay.
Is that changing of existing committees?
That's a good point.
Changing of existing committees.
Donna said that you had to, before we could approve this committee, it had to be.
It has to be approved in a council meeting.
Is that true of all committees? Is that your question?
Yes. Finance committee, was that approved in, in a meeting, council meeting?
No, but, uh, we can do that.
Well, she had just mentioned that council, that new committees or committees have to be approved in a me, in a meeting, just like her tree committee, that she wanted and hoped for.
Right.
So, I would think the same thing would, would apply for a finance committee, if they're changing of officers, that has to come before a meeting.
Now, also, to add that a committee, uh, appointed by our, in, working in conjunction with a city or any municipal government, has to be open to the public, just like any other meeting. I don't think we've known about that.
Yeah, you told me that, I wasn't.
Yeah, it, uh, it has to be open to the public, they walk in, uh, just like anybody else.
So, any, any meetings that are held by a gover- government committee has to be posted as a regular council meeting, so that the public is aware. So, the quarterly meetings should be posted for finance committee.
Can be, yeah.
I requested that then.
No problem. Got it.
Um, you mentioned that the grass contract had expired, so is that going to be put out for bid? Because I had somebody actually approached me about it, I guess 'cause they still thought I was involved.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I didn't know, actually, I didn't even know it had expired, I guess if you do an annual contract, it is time for it to expire. So, I was just gonna see, is that going to be published for bid and I can let them know? I think he bid on the last, the last one that was out.
An individual, a, a single individual or a company?
It's a company.
A company, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we'll put it out for bid and, uh, let you know.
Okay. Um, about the, um, spending policy, I was under the understanding a while back that approval for expenditures were something that was not a fixed cost.
Right.
Like your lights are fixed, your trash is fixed, um, your office supplies are typically fixed, um, within reason. Those things, I always thought were not something that had to be brought before council, because those are, so that's why I was a little confused when y'all are bringing up, hey, does the trash bill have, to call you on the trash bill? I, my understanding was it was purchasing or making improvements to the town that was going to exceed, that was gonna be outside of the norm, that would engage either in a contract or something like that, is where council would be brought together.
That's right.
And asked upon not.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Well, just so that they kind of know, I guess.
Yeah, but I did that one, yeah, I don't think, yeah, that's escaped me too.
I mean, I wouldn't want Donna calling me every single month to pay the trash bill.
But she says she gonna make it fix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or just gonna.
I mean, you can look at.
Fixed expenses.
I mean, you, yeah, you can look, when you get your three-month thing, you'll see what is paid on that, and it's pretty standard.
Anything outside, like buying these chairs was an outside thing.
Right.
We had a conversation around that.
And I think we, I think we all heard that too.
We had a conversation around that.
Right, well, this, it says purchases, it doesn't say fix, so it says anything already.
Right, so it's not. It's not the T D L.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Right.
Um, I'm going backwards through my notes. The contractor that made the mistake of cutting the wires, um, you made a comment that he wouldn't be able, or almost, I, I felt like it was a, he wouldn't be financially able to make those repairs. Do you know something that we don't know about this contractor not being able to either reimburse the town or take on the liability of fixing his mistake?
Uh, he's, he is a single individual, and no, the reason we used him because we were trying to get by as little as we could with the expenses, so we hired an individual, he couldn't fix it.
Did he fall under the contractor?
Huh?
I'm sorry.
Was he the one that caused the issue?
Did he fall under Steve as a contractor?
Yeah, he, he came on to us through.
Who I see for starters, who is this person that's become his neighbors?
Jimmy, 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 whatever, but he came to us through.
Jimmy whatever.
Our building, uh, contractor, the guy that built the pavilion and all this stuff, that's how.
So, then he would fall under him as a, he's a, the building guy's a G C, this guy's the, is the sub. So, the G C should have hold out some retainage on the sub till everything gets up and going, the sub doesn't get his retainage until we flip the switch and the lights are back on, I guess that's what I'm trying to find out.
Well, right to one extent, in many cases, if we could deal directly with the sub to cut out the contractor's percentage, we did that.
Is that what happened in this case?
This case, we were dealing directly with the electrician.
So, the electrician, and you have, the electrician was hired out separately from the G C, this electrician you're speaking of is the one that's responsible for the mistake?
That's correct.
Was he bonded?
No idea.
Okay, so maybe that's something y'all can look into, I would think he would be insured and bonded, I, I mean, did he bid for the job?
No.
He didn't bid for it?
Uh, we had a hard time finding anybody to do it, uh, we called every electrician around here and, uh, couldn't get anybody that would do it, uh, they just didn't want to take.
Well, it might be, I guess, a nine-thousand-dollar mistake then for the town, um, because possibly we should have, the town should have bid that job out.
Absolutely.
And then you could have probably gotten correct credentials, or the, the necessary credentials could have been in place to ensure if a mistake happened, um, while the work was getting done, the town was insured to have it fixed, and this person would be able to pay for any mistakes they made.
I think that's in our charter.
We'll follow through, we'll follow through to see where we stand on it and, uh, see if we can recover everything possible to recover.
We can always learn from our mistakes.
Wish it didn't cost so much.
I think that was it. That's all I have written down.
Stella, do you have anything?
I don't know.
Anything else to come before the work session? Hearing none, we will have a ten-minute recess till time for the meeting to start.
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes, okay, eight minutes.
We do have our executive session.
Yes, after the meeting tonight, we do have an executive session, um.
How are you killing it?
Um, no football games on the way.
You gotta work, I think you're working it out.
It won't take through, it won't take.
Oh, you quit?
No, no, it's a quit to come here.
Well, I said you quit, um, okay.
Yeah, it won't, the executive session shouldn't take a minute, but it can be done out in the open, involves real estate, so it has to be done in the executive session. Did you ever get a motion to close?
Are we through? Did you adjourn?
I, I called a eight-minute recess before the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Can we go into the regular meeting?
I'm gonna take a break and, uh, we'll go.
There's, the regular meeting shouldn't take but a minute, but somebody has questions that I'll go back. You still have a regular?
That's a line.
That's a line, yeah. I know what part of the line you have to go to.
Oh, I got, all the way down that way. Down, head middle low, been okay. Do it again.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Hi, how you doing?
I was by phone the other weekend.
God, I call you a kid from the boat.
Yeah.
How you been lately?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you, ma'am.
How you doing?
I love you, darling. So like this Mary, she has the.
Oh, okay.
The last part is.
So like.
Oh, okay.
But, uh.
I'm just fighting.
What I was upset about was all the numbers, the pictures and everything. Donna says it went to the. Went to.
I will have to do it.
Go back and redo it, cost twice as much. If I did, I would have to get through, spend extra money, ten years going forward.
I'm trying to think about paying your dollars.
Well.
I found that boy, unless you.
Motion to the first reading and allow the mayor to sign.
Only here to, you know, we can, we can do.
One time, we can do any section.
Yeah.
And that's what we're asking, that we do this one time so we can get her insurance.
Oh, the minutes? Those are minutes. Minutes. I, I don't think. Yeah, no, it's minutes. Yeah, so I mean, they noted on it for me to get insurance.
Yeah.
You know, as hard as me working, and that follows every, I mean, every year. Right. It's just, it's just a motion and that's what they agreed on.
I'm, I'm waiting on the work.
But it's.
There's somebody that handles it.
Right. On top of it.
Especially when they cut it, it's, yeah, it's counter. And you notice when they, they all counter comes, they all like they do.
What was in the back, on the back of the thing?
I saw what it is.
But in tubes, you can tap.
I do so many numbers I can't. That's why I ask the questions, I would like to be sitting down.
I need to ask you something for me. She asked me a question, I wanna answer it. I want them to answer it.
We talked about one time. What? That's right.
It was October.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all he did was talk about it, it was never about it.
You do remember talking about the contract?
I don't remember what I did. No.
It was, it was.
We don't have an agreement on that. Just let it come up naturally, but I just, she asked me a question, I didn't answer it.
Karen Clark didn't have a contract.
But I thought she did.
Yeah. No, that would have been making me town industry with the contract. If we are.
We didn't make it in the straight.
He never came up for vote.
He did come up for a vote, I was there.
He came up in the executive session we got talking about.
No, no, he came up in the meeting. It's in the minutes.
I don't think it was about that.
Whatever. Well, I mean, that's okay with me. I could just stop listening.
About questions.
Now, I'll sit down.
No, we never hear that time. I turn it.
It was pulled voluntarily before the public stated. She pulled the request out.
You're telling me we never voted on that?
That's true.
So I hallucinated.
I hallucinated in the minutes, I think.
Meeting, please come to order. All stand, please, please, politely.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you package your plan, the minutes of the meeting of January the eighth? If you have a chance to review those minutes, what is your pleasure as to your acceptance or additions?
Motion accepted, written.
Motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any addition or corrections to those minutes?
Yes.
What's that?
Uh, it was in the part of the session, if I, when was the contract for clerk, I was. I wanted to make sure that I was, I'll try to admit I was asking about her contract expired, not the insurance. Cause you gave me a verbal answer. You said her contract was verbal. Huh? When I asked you about the contract, he said, I asked him was the contract expired? He said, no, it was a verbal contract. And I'll refer to your contract, not the other insurance. You stayed there, I was talking about the other insurance.
Okay, so you're talking about a, okay, a personnel contract. Okay.
The town clerk. He said it was verbal?
Okay, I got you.
Any other?
I'll make that in the next minute.
Any other corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, with your acceptance of the one addition, all signify by raised hand. You know?
Ma'am, I'm requesting that you add to the cash management to the agenda and you agreed to it by phone earlier today.
Um, if we are going to add the cash management, uh, what was, what would have had to happen at that point, and we can still do it, is you have to have a, a, uh, addendum to the agenda, a motion to add to the agenda. So we need a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add cash management, please sir.
And there is a motion on the floor?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments referenced to the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor signify by raised hand. You package the first reading of the participation of the town of Scherzberg and the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit Assistant Life and Health Program that we have discussed in the work session. We need a motion to accept the first reading and allow the mayor to sign the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to accept the first reading. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion that the mayor signed the ordinance? At this point, I'll ask you, what are we going to do if we don't tie into the Georgia Municipal Program? Question from the mayor's on the floor.
Ma'am, I'm totally confused. I thought we had agreed at an executive session to offer Donna of the administrative position and a contract. We went into executive session, we came out, and you made the statement, unless I am, no, I might give you a chance to agree with me on that one. Um, the statement was made that we would offer her the contract with the certain stipulations. And now you tell me that she has no contract, so I'm totally confused on process.
This is, this has nothing to do with that part. This is pertaining to the, us going from the old insurance company to the new insurance company, signing on with the Georgia Municipal Employees System. That's all the motion is saying, and that motion is on the floor. Is there a second? And the motion that the mayor's question still stands, what are we going to do in lieu of? Counsel, do you have a comment?
I would just like to, I sent you an email asking you to, for the documents that, that I needed.
Ma'am?
I sent you an email asking for the documents. I asked you for the documents that I said that I felt comfortable.
Right, and I sent it.
Oh, did you?
Uh-huh.